Ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to start our January 11th first council meeting of 2016. Welcome and happy new year to all. Thank you for coming. I call the meeting to order and I ask at this time for any added items from council? Seeing none? Administration? Hearing none, then I'd ask for the adoption of the agendas presented. Good. Hey, we'll just get Counselor Durie to do that since he's been away for such a very long time. I forget what he looks like.
Thank you, your worship. I would move that we adopt the agenda for Monday, January 11th, 2016.
You're very welcome and it's good to see you back. Any last comments? Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. Page three of your agenda, please, the previous minutes of December 14. Who would like to put that on the floor? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, your worship. I move that the minutes from the December 14th, 2015 regular council meeting be adopted.
Thank you, Counselor Bennett. Does council have any questions at this time? Seeing none, then I will call for the motion. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. We have no presentations and delegations. Very good. Business arising out of the minutes. Seeing none. We have no bylaws today. Unfinished business, none. New business. Item 8A, page 10, Olds Farmers and Farmerettes Bonds Bill sponsorship. And we'll start with Mr. Wegstaff, our acting CAO.
As this is almost an annual, well, it is an annual request. It's just not a standing request. So again, the Farmers Farmerettes Bonds Bill here with the Olds Curling Club has come forward with a request for a silver sponsorship from council. And that's the same level that we've done and participated in in the past.
Therefore, I would at this time ask council to move forward with a motion and we can certainly discuss. Counselor Overwater?
Yes, I move that a silver sponsorship of $250 be approved for the 2016 Olds Farmer and Farmerettes Bonds Bill.
Thank you. I'll open the floor to discussion if council chooses to discuss. Counselor Harper?
Just a question, your worship, and by the way, I fully support the Olds Farmers Farmerettes Bonds Bill. It brings a lot of people from the farming community to our town for a week and I think that's great for business and for the town in whole. A question as part of the silver sponsorship, it indicates it's with one curler. Do we just decide not to appoint a curler or do we appoint a curler from today?
In the past, as my understanding, the administration has, you know, found an applicable staff member to join them. That's the process we've done the last couple of years.
So am I hearing that you will be putting a curler up? One or two? From the town?
It's one. It's a curler that we provide for a team.
Okay.
Yes.
Does anybody on council wish to let their name stand as well?
I would this year, but I won't be here this year.
Okay. Well, we'll wait till next year. Ms. Counselor Durie?
I missed the date.
The date? So do we know what days? Do you curl, Counselor Durie?
Only my hair. If it's on the right day, I would be happy to attend. I have to go for the whole week?
Yes.
Oh, well, then I would, in an emergency, I would be happy to do that.
Okay. So do the staff members attend every day as well?
They do. So what happens is the staff will go curl the game and then come back. We usually find out what team we're on and then, you know, between people who are interested in who we might strategically place. So of course, you know, Larry, A being a curler and B strategic pieces. We've had Michelle Honeyman, myself, and Debbie Rogers as well. So that's in recent memory over the last three, four years.
Okay. Well, keep in mind that Counselor Durie is interested. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Overwater?
Just to make a comment, I believe the men have four events. So the men, if they would curl four games for sure. And I believe the women have three events and they would curl three games for sure. So just to clarify that.
Good. All right. We have a motion on the floor right now from Counselor Overwater. Any further discussion? If none, I call for the vote. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. Page 16, please, item 8B. This is the Olds Golf Club Letter of Support. This is an annual request as well. So where are you taking us? Okay. That's not fair. Okay, this is for the SIP application. And I guess before we get started, I'd ask our acting CAO, do we, does the Town of Olds or our finance, do we also apply for a SIP grant?
No, in fact municipalities are not eligible. They are eligible to be supportive, but we're not actually eligible for the grant.
I guess I should reword that request. Do we get asked by other organizations other than the golf club to help them with their SIP grants?
We have in the past. And then that's why we have the policy in place. The way it's set up is that we see if there's any conflict amongst applicants. And there is none identified at this point.
Absolutely. Therefore, I'd ask for motion. Counselor Harper? You're not monetarily affected, so you can vote.
You don't, you personally don't benefit, Counselor Bearshell, so I think you're okay.
Do you?
So I'd be more than pleased to make a motion that council direct the mayor to write a general letter of support for the Olds Golf Club's Community Initiative Program Grant Application for Improvements to the Olds Golf Club Parking Lot.
I'd be more than happy to sign that, but I'll have the letter writer be my acting CAO. That would be great. Yes, I have no problem with that. Therefore, I'd ask, I'd call for the vote. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. All right, item 8C now, page 18 of your agenda, please, with regards to the intermunicipal cooperation master agreement. As you can see, the background work has now been done with the committee, the intermunicipal cooperation master agreement. It's taken a year to get to the point of bringing this back to all councils. And depending on all council resolutions, whether each municipality will pass the approval of their intermunicipal cooperation master agreement, will we then hence move forward to January 25th? So we can start with the first motion and then we can take questions from there if you wish. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, your worship. I move that council approve the intermunicipal cooperation master agreement with Mountain View County.
Oh, what happened to that? Yeah, we'll do two parts to that.
It will be two motions, two separate motions.
So we're going, requesting approval for the intermunicipal cooperation master agreement with the Mountain View County, to which you've all been apprised to in several meetings? Any questions? Hearing none, then I call for the vote. Those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Therefore, we would ask then permission for authorization for signature at a special joint council meeting on January 25th. Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, your worship. I move that the Town of Olds and Mountain View County hold a special joint council meeting on Monday, January 25th, 2016 at 1:00 PM at the Mountain View County office. And Olds Town Council authorize the mayor and CAO to sign the agreement at the special joint council meeting.
And of course, all of council is invited to attend that special council meeting. I understand if you are unable to make it because of other work commitments, however, we'd be very excited to have you there. Any further questions or comments? Yes, we would. But I'm not, I can't force anybody to be there. But we do need a quorum. It is a special council meeting, joint. Good. Perfect. And we hope to have representation. We don't have a confirmation yet of any ministers. We have invited, but I do believe we'll have an answer to that before the end of the week. All right. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. All right. I'm excited about that and I can't wait to hear back from all our partner municipalities. So we'll know by the end of the week. Very good. We will move forward now to page 51, item 8D. Counselor Harper?
Thank you very much, your worship. In light of the fact that this does cover personnel, i.e. labor, I so moved that we go into camera for some further discussion on the organizational chart.
Okay. It sounds like my council has questions at this time. I'd like to clear the room, please, and we'll just leave our acting CAO in the room at
Thank you, your worship. I move that the Town of Olds organizational structure data, January 6, 2016 be approved. Do we want that? Some information to come back on something? Or does it matter? Okay. All right.
I believe our acting CAO, Mr. Wegstaff, was just going to give us some information in reference to an additional community facilitator.
So I'll provide an overview that we had a vacancy come up in a position that is in the same grid category as a community facilitator and has no budget impact difference. And a lot of the responsibilities were very similar to what a community facilitator does. And that's the community services and cemetery administrator. As we've committed to as administration, when vacancies in the organization come up, we, unless there's an operational need to immediately fill them, it's critical to get filled, you know, as soon as we possibly can, that we're going to take a review of those positions and see operationally, you know, how, how should it work? And is it the position that we need in the way that we need it? In this position's case, we took a look at it over the last four months. We have, you know, allocated out the work that that position was doing. It's been covered off for four months. That's also been covered off with the supervisor, the manager in that, in that area as well. So we took a look at that and recognized that, that that is not sustainable long term, especially when we want, you know, our manager to be doing, you know, certain things and not always doing the hands-on of what we'd like the position to do. As well as we took a look at one of the goals that council has set out, that we were looking at ways to try and build the capacity to enact is that engagement piece with inside our organization and outside of our organization and to get more involved in facilitating the engagement within the community. And we were really looking at this department to lean on that. So this is an opportunity for us to, to not limit a position to a particular area and continue as we've done over the last four months and have the job tasks out across a number of positions. So it's not just dedicated, and in this case, like cemetery, that it solely only has to be in that position, that it can be moved around as can the, the different groups that will be assigned. This also allows the, you know, more assignment to this position. Previously, the way the position was set up, you know, per their job description, assigning them some facility, it's not facility, facilitation duties with community groups wasn't completely there in the, in the job description. Whereas by making it a community facilitator, it allows us that flexibility to, to spread out that support.
Any further questions before we move to call for the approval of the motion? All right, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor? That's carried. Did you get the name for that? Who made that motion? Counselor Overwater? Okay, thank you, just to confirm. All right, thank you. Reports from council. It's a standing item on our agenda. It is the beginning of the month, so we do not have a request for decision. However, we do have the option to bring up reports at this time. I'll let council go first and then we'll move on from there. Counselor Overwater?
Sure. Thank you, your worship. I don't have a full report, but just to inform everyone, our waste transfer station out at Water Valley got broken into. They seem to be on a binge and breaking into the Waste Commission lately. So they stole the safe and pulled the counter right out and all kinds of things out there. So anyways, we're looking after that, getting it fixed and probably we'll never find the people anyway. Never do. But anyway, just wanted to bring that forward.
Question, do you have any cameras at either of your facilities?
No.
Okay. Is it something you're going to look into for security for the future?
Well, the thing is, like even when they have broken into, you know, the landfill at Didsbury, you know, they, sometimes they necessarily don't come through the gate. So, I mean, those are some big properties that we would have to sort of camera. We'll be talking about it at our meeting on the 25th, so, but, yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Any further reports from other council? Counselor Walsh?
Yeah, the Salt River Regional Waste Water Commission interviewed four candidates for CAO position. That was last week. The offer stands until today and I think we're very hopeful that we have a good CAO candidate. I just throw that out to you. We're back on track almost.
Will the position be the same? It's a part-time position?
Yeah, the position is part-time, so it's, it's not a full-time position. Basically, our budget for CAO is $50,000 and people, we're comfortable with that as a part-time position, so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I see some other hands thinking here. Counselor Harper and then Counselor Bearshell.
Just a question of Mr. Counselor Walsh in reference to the Waste Water Commission. I know that we as a council have requested a few times whether the commission chair and I would believe now the new CAO would find an opportunity to come to our council to a P and P meeting.
Yeah, that will be one of the, we'll even discuss that with candidates, the time coming into each municipality. But that will be happening and given the timeframe, it should be happening fairly quickly as we, as we move forward. They have an audit to deal with, first office, first part of their job, but after that is done, I think they'll have plenty of time to come to each council and give an update as they learn what's happening within the, within the organization.
Counselor Bearshell?
Thank you, your worship. I've been on council for five years and I always forget. Can I ask a couple of questions of administration at this point?
If they require action items, you can, but you might not get an answer.
And that's fine, because I just wanted to ask a couple of questions because I don't really have any report. But being that I don't know how long it's been, I would wanted an update first and foremost on the L and the D on the library sign because they're still not up.
You may want to ask your, your, okay. You may want to start with your counselor that sits on that, who happens to be the chairperson. Do you have any answer for him?
I would defer to Mr. Champ because we've talked about it. They have a plan in place. They've sent over the appropriate people and I understand that they're going to, I think they're going to move the sign onto the building rather than keeping it as it is so that it can be non-touchable.
And in the true spirit of a government organization, I'm going to pass it off to Mr. Wegstaff. He's been dealing with it before I was. So very much to how, it hasn't been a firm decision made with the, I can't think of Leslie's title, but the manager of the library. So we do have one of our staff working directly with her on what would work for the library and would be less vandalism proof. It was decided not just to order the O and the L back because they felt that that was just going to reoccur at some point in time and, and look at getting something potentially lit as well that would go right directly on the building a little bit further up off the ground. So that's, that's where we're at. Timeline, I don't have a timeline for you at this, this point, but this fall, when they did take the graffiti off, they decided not to utilize that area that's, that has the Olds Library on it.
Okay, so I just have, I just want to say that it's been an embarrassment now for at least eight months. And if they're, if that's the plan, get them to take the L, the rest of the letters off because there is paint on there. It's utterly embarrassing and that's all I'm going to say. And I would assume and hope that other councils and members of our community feel the same way. If I was managing that organization, I would be upset every single time I walked in and watched it. That's all I'm going to say. Number two, what's our policy on sanding? Because I drove around our community all weekend and I was, thankfully, I'm such a responsible driver that I didn't get in any accidents, but all weekend, it was very, very dangerous around our community. I'd like a refresher as to what our policy is on a weekend as to when the roads were in the situation that they were around intersections in our community.
So that one I will answer. The policy on the weekends is basically, to the discretion of the director, that if he feels it needs to be out there or if we get complaints from our CMP. But we do have a gentleman that's supposed to go out in the mornings and do a tour through the, do a tour through the town and make sure that the major red routes are done. Sunday was warmed up quite a bit, so it wasn't as much as Saturday, but, and that's where we're at with that.
Okay. It was just, it's too late, but it was bad and then several complaints and that in many cases. Anyways, that's all I really had to stir the pot with in my little time here.
Thank you very much. I know you had a question, but Counselor Bennett was first and then Counselor Overwater?
Further to both of those, Saturday was not pleasant to drive around town at any of the four-way stops or any of the stop signs. So I too agree with that. And I too am very upset at the library for not getting this, I'm not sure who's responsible, but it does look pitiful. So my next question is, fine, you're going to remove those two letters. What's going to become of the sign that's sitting there right now when you take the letters off?
There hasn't been any decision yet. There was consideration to, to taking it out completely, but that hadn't, hadn't been resolved yet.
Well, we might be able to put some artwork on there. We may as well leave it. We've already paid to put it there. Anyways, that's the future. Counselor Overwater was next. And may I remind you, this is a report period. We're trying to stick to council reports at this time, but go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Just a question back to Doug Wegstaff, or Mr. Wegstaff, sorry. On his comment about lights, is, you're looking at that for the, the sign at the library. Have you already put that in their budget as for that will happen out of their budget? Or is that, is that another budget area coming from?
We, we do have a budget line for signage. It's not within the library budget itself, but our parks budget line for signage.
Counselor Bearshell, do you have anything further you want to add? I see you wanted to put your hand up.
No, I want to beat this library sign a little bit more because the question that you said, or the comment that you made, I think is very appropriate in that I think that to go and spend a whole bunch of money on this library sign is an entire waste of money. I'll be extremely disappointed if that's the, the plan after eight to 10 months of this sign being that way, that we're going to go spend a whole bunch of money. Because number one, if the argument is that we're trying to limit graffiti, then are we going to move every single wall in our community up so that we can go and do, you know, every single opportunity for somebody to do? I'm looking for a simple fix. To me, the L and the D would have been a great little fix. I know other people felt same, felt different, but at the end of the day, I don't want to see a $5,000 change for something that somebody went and spray painted in our community. Because lots of opportunities for people, there's, there's graffiti in our town, that actually, this wasn't even on my list, but there's graffiti in our town that I've been bringing up for months and months. Actually, some of it, we have pictures of in our communications with regards to the community bylaw that we're, we're proposing that have not been addressed. And I'm frustrated with it. I'm frustrated with the lack in the things we can control, like the library sign. I don't want to come back personally and see a whole bunch of money spent on that sign when it could be an inexpensive fix because I don't think that necessarily is the correct path that we could, we should be going on to waste taxpayers' money because somebody sprayed, decided to take a couple of letters off a sign.
Okay. You've got that information? Yes, go ahead.
It wasn't the graffiti, wasn't the, the reason for the choice of, of looking at some other signs. It's how easily those letters can be popped off, just that style. That style up higher, and that's the discussion that's happening with the library right now. Do we just use that sort of same style, but up higher on the building where they can't be touched? When they're down low like that, they come off too easy. And that's, that's the issue of the style. There was also some discussion about whether we still use that spot, but have some different type of lettering on there that can't pop off. So it wasn't the graffiti, wasn't the reason for a different sign. It was the, that style of sign when it's up out of reach, it can't be touched, but down low, they come off way too easy.
I can tell you that the fix that the Deer Meadow School did with the exact same sign has worked. They took all the lettering off and then just wrote something on and it hasn't been touched since. So it worked. They couldn't deal with it any other way. Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, worship. I was going to say exactly the same thing regarding the Deer Meadow sign. I mean, if, if that's going to, you know, I don't know what it would cost to move the letters up. I'm sure it's not just a $2,000 little fix. It never seems to be. So, I mean, possibly that's something that administration should look into before all of a sudden we start moving signs up and lighting them up.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. I will, I'm happy to inform council that we've had our municipal area partnership meeting this morning. We wanted to start, start off with presentations that we'll be doing from each municipality for information sharing. We had a presentation today from Mayor Colby of Carstairs with an update in his community. The Town of Sundry and the Crimona Village were also to do their updates, but canceled, so they'll be doing theirs next month. As well, the Town of Olds will be doing theirs next month. It is an open meeting if you want to come. You're more than welcome to come in here. We talked about the future of MAP and what the real purpose was and what type of process we would like to complete and how our involvement of all our councils were, what that would look like for the future to make MAP a success. We wanted to have more involvement with our councils as a whole. So we're building on our terms of reference and we went through some key messages to bring back to all our councils. And one of the main items that we, idea shared was that we keep municipal area partnerships as a standing item on all our council agendas. That way, it gives engagement, full engagement to all the council members and/or administration staff to bring up either a issue, an opportunity and/or some idea sharing for us to take back to the table to MAP. Keeps you fully engaged on what's going at all times. So that is coming in the very near future as well as the arrangement of having an all councils introduction, a gain of all councils and, and being able to have the ability to meet each other. We also touched on an item that we had left on the governance model of the Mountain View Regional Waste Management Commission on our past agenda. And we came to the conclusion as a municipal area partnership body of members with no authority to move. to move forward without speaking to our councils as a whole, um, that we discussed a lot of different types of models, but none of them really addressed the concerns that municipalities, um, that we as municipalities all had about commissions. And, um, the costs of, of moving to, and the timeframe of creating, um, any other type of governance model for the commission, um, was, um, hindrance to us. Um, so we encourage that every municipality look at, um, the new business plan that the commission members created. Um, and I trust that, well, we have had it shared with us and we're trusting that all the other municipalities go back to the table and really review that business plan, that new business plan that they provided to us and connect themselves, uh, with that solid business plan process. So we don't feel like we'll move forward on searching that new governance model at this time because we're very proud of, uh, where the commission has got to today. Um, as mayors and reeves, I know there was some issues, uh, that could have been viewed as negative and/or threatening to the commission members. Um, however, we want to reassure all the commission members. Uh, we had two members there today as well that'll carry on the message, um, in the future. But, um, it was strictly for us to seek to understand what the commission was doing and, and collectively learn more about it as municipal area partnership members so we could be accountable to our own councils. But now we're going to be all doing that together. So we're very happy about, uh, moving forward. Um, it was recommended, I, I recommended that we put a, um, motion on the floor to bring a letter of support back to the commission. However, I don't have the authority to do that. We have to speak to our councils as a whole first to get permission to be able to do that. So that'll be coming up in the very near future as well. And, um, looking forward to the upcoming year, we've got some key messages we're going to be sharing with council, um, to further discuss recommendations for the future. But I think putting it on a standard, as a standing item on all our council agendas is going to be a first step that we hope works. So, um, that was the first step at, uh, the future for MAP today, and we'll have lots more coming next month. So if you have any questions, you can come and talk to me about it later, but, uh, there's really nothing too much more to share. Um, in the mayor of, uh, Carstairs', uh, uh, report, um, he did note, um, some interesting facts about, um, how the population today is around 4,600, whereas in the past, in 2006, it was 2,656. So their main concern, of course, is going to be, um, how they build their enhanced policing into their format before they hit the, the 5,000, uh, threshold of having to pay. Um, and I would like to remind you also, if you're wondering at all about any dollars for MAP, um, when we concluded MAP, uh, meetings about a couple of years ago, or whenever it was, we were sitting with about $65,000 left in our budget that we had collectively, uh, $2 per capita collected on behalf of all municipalities. That money is still there. We feel today that, um, the $65,000 should cover us now until the next election, uh, for the next two years unless something drastic happens that we need help with and we may need to use the funds. Otherwise, we will not be requesting that $2 per capita from our municipalities now, um, unless an emergency happens. So that's, that's where we're at with the money as well. And a reminder also, I received in the mail today that, uh, the Mayor's Caucus, Olds, will be hosting the Summer Mayor's Caucus at the Palmeray Inn on June 16th. And I encourage all my council to attend, being it is at here in Olds. Um, so June 16th, if you'd like to save that date, and I can get you more information in the near future. And that's all I have. And I would ask for a motion to accept reports then at this time, unless there's questions. Councillor Bearishel?
No, I'd love to make that motion to accept the reports from all council and...
Thank you. Good. Any further questions then? All those in favor? That's carried. Quarterly financial position update. When is that next one due? Sheena?
The next one will probably be February, beginning of February.
Okay.
You'll get the end of December.
Your worship, could I request a, sorry, could I request a quick five-minute break?
Recession?
Yeah, just a quick one, or?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Or would you like us, we can certainly wait, yeah.
Can you wait for a second, or would you?
No, we'll take a five-minute recess. Go ahead. All right, well, we can be, reconvened back from recess at this time. Page, page 53, please. Accounts payable report, item 11A. Would like to put a motion on the floor for that. Councillor Walsh?
Yeah, I moved that to November 1st, 2015 to November 30th, 2015, accounts payable report be received for information.
I did, uh, you will note that these are separated only because of the months, which makes them different to our payable reports, so we blew them individually. Uh, questions? Councillor Bearishel?
No, I sent my questions to Garth, I'm a soup, I'm a soup, oh, he didn't forward them on? Okay. I have a couple of questions and I'll kind of keep them as simple as I can. Um, there was one, 71394 to Player Stall. I'd like to know what that is.
I have the same one.
I have a question. I have a couple.
Go ahead, Doug, Mr. Wagstaff?
That was part of the renovations in the, uh, the dressing rooms of the arena.
Okay. So I'm assuming that's for the, the Olds College Bronco Ladies Team?
Correct, yes.
So, refresh my memory, what are we paying? Like, when did we budget for this, to, to spend all this money? And I, maybe you told me the last time, but are they paying rent on this? Like, like how much rent are they paying on this to get this dressing room, the, with the money we've invested in it?
So, yes, we approved it in the, in the budget for the renovations in the, uh, sports complex. And yes, their contract is structured that over a, uh, five-year window period of time that their, their rental, not their ice rental, that the rental of the dressing room would recover the investments that we've made into that area.
So how much are they paying over the five-year period?
I'd have, I'd have to go back and look at it, and that would be one I would ask that we would, you know, I'd get back to council. Um, with the structures of the Grizzlies and the Broncos contracts and Oldsmutter Hockey, when we get into the financial details, I'm not sure how much we should disclose. Uh, we do treat them all equally, uh, but it is recouping, um, not quite equal. It was about, uh, you're pressing my memory, I had it prepared there a couple of meetings ago when the questions came up. Um, I think there was about $2,000, uh, difference between what we invested and what we were going to recoup back.
Okay, I'd like to know what they're paying per month for that room rental, actually at some point. Um, 5662 Canadian Corps commissioners, and I, I'm assuming that's just, um, their honorarium or whatever, however you charge it, but I'd like to know if that's monthly, quarterly? What is that?
So it's not honorarium. It is our contract with the Commissioner Corps for, uh, bylaw enforcement. And I'm going to defer till they take a look and see what, uh, what our invoice is. It's monthly.
So that's the one fellow that drives around town in the truck every week? We pay $50,000 a year. Okay, just so that's noted? That sounds fair? Before fuel's put in that truck and everything? Okay. Um, 6240 McBane Camera, just assuming is a fire department?
Yeah, it was a lens for camera.
I have my list, but I think that covers most of what, let someone else have a chance.
Okay, councillor Overwater and then councillor Harper?
Thank you, your worship. Um, okay, I also had that Player Stall, but you did that. Active Network, what is that? Uh, 4301.
So Active Net is the program we use, uh, at the pool as part of our payments. So they're putting, uh, our scheduling and our payment, so that would be the payment portions, right?
So this particular Active Net was for our new software upgrade for, it's a link together.
Okay. Um, then we have one to, uh, well, I guess the check number is 0005, Carstairs Skating Club? Not sure why we're paying Carstairs Skating Club $1,074.
We would look into that one, yes.
Okay. Um, then I also have... I think that was it. Yep, that was it. Wait, councillor Bearishel had the other ones.
Councillor Harper?
Uh, I do, I did provide Shawna the, the two that I wanted to inquire about, and that's to Derek's Formal, two different checks, one for over $1,000 and the other one for 800, 700 and somewhat dollars.
So the first one for just over $1,000 was for the peace officer uniform?
Oh, okay, okay.
And the second one was for a fire uniform.
Okay, thank you.
And just a reminder, um, the check I would like to speak to is InPipe Technology, and I spoke to, uh, Mr. Chant, uh, and he assures me that December will be the last payment for $6,300 that we'll see for InPipe. Thank you. And you can share with councillor Y.
Yeah, thank you through the mayor. That contract that we had for InPipe Technologies was, uh, up until the day we were going to full regionalization. So it was a chemical, uh, implementation that we done for our sewer pipe for treatment to help our aging wastewater treatment plant. And the full extent was, once we went 100% full regionalization, we're going to stop using that service. So they've been notified and, uh, been told as such that, uh, we're no longer using their services. Uh, been since told that, uh, they're actually in discussions with, um, South Red Deer Regional Wastewater to see if they want to take it over. So as far as we're concerned, is, uh, December will be the last payment.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure councillor Walsh was aware of that.
Yes, the bylaws. Yes, the objections?
Good. All right, we have a motion on the floor from councillor Walsh to accept the accounts payable for this run of November. Any further questions? Uh, sure, Mr. Wagstaff?
I have another question, but I can provide an answer on the monthly charge. It's 46725 for that portion of their contract. Monthly.
Are you speaking to councillor Bearishel?
Yes, for the dressing room.
Oh.
And that's, you know, per our, our rates that we charge, minor hockey, um, and the Olds Grizzlies.
So is that strictly for leasehold improvements, or is that rental of that room?
That's, it, it's, in the way we've structured it, it's one and the same. They're, they are, from the point that we turned it over, they are responsible for any leaseholder improvements in the dressing room. Uh, from the dressing room rental, we've structured their, um, contract to ensure that any primary one-time fee that they pay, as well as their monthly, would recoup our investments that we brought it up to a dressing room over a five-year period of time.
Thank you. Any further questions to this accounts payable run? We'll have a motion on the floor, those in favor? That's carried. Now we'll go to the, uh, accounts payable report for December. A motion, please, on the floor for that one. Councillor Bennett?
Thank you, your worship. I move that the December 1st, 2015 to December 31st, 2015, accounts payable report be received for information.
Thank you. Do we have questions to this report? The only comment I have that I constantly see in every accounts payable run, and it's just a comment, um, and I'm going to ask, uh, Mr. Chant, do we have, uh, good drinking water in this town?
Yes.
Because from what I can see in all our reports is that we're spending, I'm going to guesstimate 600 plus a year on bottled water. Is there a reason for that? That's my question. We need to look a little closer at, at ways and means to save money, and we have good drinking water in this town and we don't need to be buying, and I like water too, but we don't need to be buying bottled water, in my opinion. So we need to revisit that.
We'll come back with a, after we do some investigation.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion on the floor, those in favor? That's carried, thank you. Correspondence and information, page 69. All right, a motion, councillor, who didn't I get today yet? Councillor Duryea, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I would move that the correspondence and information report ending January 11th, 2016 be received for information.
Thank you, sir. I have three points of interest I'd like to start with, and if council has to add to that, that'd be great. I'd like to start with the, uh, page 75, Medicine River Wildlife Center. It is actually, perhaps I missed this, this is my fault, uh, ladies and gentlemen, it is a request, it should have been a request for decision. They are looking for support, monetary support, and I don't know who I can, who would speak to this, uh, Mr. Wagstaff, is that your department with regards to, um, the educational programs to the community? They state they've had five educational programs, 181 members of our community, and 5% of the wildlife treated were transported from the town of Olds. Would that seem correct to you?
We would look into that a little further and ask them, especially if they're asking for a donation. We would, we can vet that through our donations policy before, uh, returning to council.
Okay, I, I think my err, I should have actually had, uh, had, uh, prepared a request for decision for that because that does need further investigation with regards to a request for money and/or support. Um, and the other, um, other ones are a little, little obvious. Of course, page 77, um, on behalf of the, uh, elected officials and the citizens of the town of Olds, again, um, I'd like to say, councillor Walsh, congratulations on your award. Well deserved. Yes, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you. It was a bit of a surprise, but it's, it's, when you get involved in an organization, sometimes the time just goes by and you don't notice, you know, when they start listening to your ears and going, yeah, that's kind of a long time.
You're having so much fun.
I'm having so much fun. You're right, thank you.
And lastly, of course, there were, uh, individuals on the, uh, elected officials as well as staff and town citizens that attended the, uh, passing of Barber Hill. Uh, past, uh, past staff member for the town of Olds, and I'd just like to make sure that you're all well aware that, uh, the Alberta Recreation and Parks Association renamed the ARPA Merit Award to the Barber Hill Merit Award in December. And I'm proud to see that, and I wanted to make sure that, uh, you were all well aware of that. Um, so at this point, uh, start with councillor Overwater and then councillor Harper?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, page 71, um, the Mountain View County talking about, um, basin chip seal, and the town's, um, portion would be 850,000. Are, are we looking at any of that?
Thank you.
I don't think, it's not in our budget, is it?
Thank you, councillor Overwater. That matter has been brought to my attention as well then, uh, I asked them to forward it to Mr. McGinnis, and he, Mr. McGinnis and his staff have taken care of that item, um, and it will not be dealt with in 2016. Councillor Harper?
Thank you, your worship, and this is in reference to the letter from Government of Alberta Transportation, uh, in reference to another, yet again, Highway 2 corridor functional planning study. And I note that they have indicated they will be do, they've hired consultants again for a Highway 2 Calgary Edmonton corridor functional study, and that they will not be seeking public consultation. But I firmly believe that we should be sending a letter to Alberta Transportation in reference to our concerns about the Highway 27 and Highway 2 overpass. 2 overpass.
Okay, I would recommend that you be prepared to make a motion on that behalf after. We already have a motion on the table right now. Any further questions to the correspondence? Counselor Walsh?
I'm just thinking about this request. This may be a MAP initiative because it affects just not the town of Olds. The county residents are also affected, and people west of us. So, I think this would be a good initiative, that all municipalities get together and making a letter.
Mr. Counselor Walsh, will you refer which correspondence you're speaking to? Is it Alberta Municipal Fairs or Mountain View County?
I was thinking the Highway 2 corridor improvements.
That could be part of the resolution that comes out of this, if there is one. Counselor Bennett?
Well, further to that Highway 2 corridor improvement study, it wasn't that long ago that we did one, and what will be done with that information that they had already identified? But they were talking about changes to the overpass, and so, too bad, so sad. We got to say something then and not this time.
I'd like to say some, can I say some? I'd just like to say that's really great. We got $26,900 from Alberta Recycling for, obviously, it states in here, the playground at Horizon. Mr. Wagstaff?
That is correct. It was a grant that the Horizon Parent Society had applied for with us, and, you know, we received it. The delay in getting the money was that we just had to verify and prove to them that it was Alberta recycled material that was used in the playground.
Sorry, I just wanted to get additional information on this 2015 street improvement program. So, this was anticipated and is part of the budget, the 451 that was received? Please, quarterly project submitted, right? Sorry, page 70.
Sheena, this is a question likely for you.
Or regarding budget, I guess?
So, and I'll stand corrected if Sheena has something either to correct me on or to. When we apply, we need to apply for that funding back to the government, and then they verify that for us. And then, it's already done and spent, and we always get the verification letters back. So, that's what this correspondence is about.
Typically, I just give these to Garth, and they come copied to the CAO. However, I do like council to be aware that the money has come and gone and that it was approved. All right, we have a motion on the floor to accept from Counselor Duryea the information. Any further questions? Those in favor? That's carried. I believe at this time, I would, and I could make a motion, I will. I would further direct our CAO to bring back some information with regards to Medicine River Wildlife Center. Letter dated December 17, request for support from the town of Olds. Any further questions? Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Counselor Harper, are you still looking for?
Well, your Worship, I'm not.
Direct me to take it to MAP?
Well, actually, it's sort of a MAP thing, but it's also an individual municipality. So, I think that they will be contacting our municipalities in reference to, and they state here, developments, proposed developments along Highway 2 that would impact our plans. So, I believe that it's both a municipality issue in reference to Highway 2 and 27 overpass as well as a municipal area partnership issue. So, I'm not sure that we need to make a motion right at this point. And I see Mr. Wagstaff has his hand.
Wagstaff?
And your Worship, I would agree for some different reasons, but I would agree because in the letter, it does state that, you know, be prepared for the fact that their consultant is going to be contacting our municipality. So, I think that's a good heads-up that they will be, we should be ready and prepared to give them some answers when they call us about what plans do we foresee, you know, impacts on the Highway 2 corridor on our municipality. And certainly, the motion that we earlier passed about the agreement, the memorandum of understanding with the county, that's the type of work for planning that the committees and subcommittees are going to be taking a look at when we're talking about joint growth and impacts and opportunities. It's this kind of thing that that working administrative group can certainly get their teeth into.
Well said. Okay. Am I looking for a motion? We're all good. That was just information? All right. All right, let's move down then to question period, which would be likely with our media. So, I'm going to ask for adjournment at this time. Counselor Bearishaw, those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.